I'd like to call all of the Board of Selectmen's meeting of Tuesday, August 1st, at 7:00 PM. Everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I believe it's to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have any announcements this evening. Does anybody in the audience have anything they would like to add? Seeing as none, the first thing on our agenda is a sign review for the Douglas Orchards. Aaron, would you like to come up?
My wife is now here.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
All right. So just a little overview as to why we're even here, so everybody understands. Back in April, I received an email somebody was concerned about the temporary sandwich board sign that you had put up on the corner of Southeast Main and Main Street, which I had talked to you about.
Absolutely.
And you offered to take it down, which was fine. And then it reappeared. So then the same individual sent me an email again about that sign and actually another location, which I talked to you about the other day.
Yep.
Like anybody else that would send in an inquiry, I have to react to it, or I should at least react.
Fine.
So that's why we're here tonight.
Appreciate it.
So I did ask Lisa what, look through the original minutes from 2000.
And I have those as well.
2018 on your application, when you applied for that sign, it was for the farmer's market?
No. Okay, but we'll review that. I saw that, but it's not relative. We were just making an announcement that the Historical Society no longer was having a successful market. And it was basically, by the way, we're going to do the farmer's market. We would never have done that because we had already been in business without the farmer's market. The farmer's market was just an add-on. It had nothing to do with the request. The request was for our core business. This is how I presented it.
Okay, so humor me for a minute.
Sure.
What I'm going by is approved minutes from May 21st, 2019, that the, that existing Board of Selectmen approved. And in those minutes, they said, you have a copy of it. So it says what it is, and I'll read. It says, "Aaron and Nick Sokrat joined the meeting. Aaron Sokrat presented one of the two signs that had been made for Douglas Orchards. He asked for permission to place the signs across from the farmer's market and at the corner of Route 16 and Southeast Main Street. The signs will be erected..."
Absolutely. Yep.
Let me finish talking, please. "The signs will be erected April 1st and come down for the season in mid-November. The police chief, fire chief, town engineer, highways superintendent, and the church had no objections to the locations." Now, Mr. Sokrat needs to get sign permits. And then it goes on to say that Douglas Orchards is hosting a farmer's market for 16 straight weeks, starting June 15th, 2019. This is all that I have to go with.
Oh, sure.
And this is what they approved back in 2019. So if it's different than that, I believe Tim was on the board, maybe he recalls it. I'm not sure.
If I can address that, and first of all, I want to, I want to thank the person, whoever it is, that brought this to our attention. It was really very good of them to sort of bring it to our attention, so we could come before you and modify and/or amend the decision. Very important, because we've been in business about seven years there, and since 2019, it's been four years since. And then we know that COVID hit right after that farmer's market we did, which incidentally was an incidental remark to this statement, just like the remark of, "We'll be doing the tree for the town." You see that? So there were two remarks. By the way, we'll be doing the farmer's market as information, just to the public. And by the way, we'll be doing the tree. So one had nothing to do with the other. It was a, it doesn't say, therefore, because we're going to do the farmer's market, we want to do signs. It was an add-on. No, it's, yeah, go ahead.
And I'm sure that's how you...
Right. And the reason we set across from the farmer's market...
But going back, and we jump back in history, let's get something straight. I'm not opposed to your sign.
Right.
If we need to modify your sign permit and the board agrees to it, I have no objections to that. That's not what this is. What this is, is just addressing a complaint that came in. Going by what was written, it's very specific. It says, and it's not, by the way, it says, "The signs will be erected April 1st and come down..."
That's the wooden sign.
"...come down for the season mid-November."
Right.
What's that?
It's the, it's the wooden sign that is carved, not the, not the...
And at that point, we had not been open all year, and we have been successful and contributory to the town, and therefore, we have 21 vendors, most of them local artisans, who through the winter and Christmas, we're really busy at the holiday time. And so that's one of the amendments I'd like to make to this, that we can leave that sign up. Of course, the other one's gotten a little ratty. We're going to take it down next week, and we're going to clean it up, because it needs to be refinished. You see that one? It's kind of flaking away on us, and it's, but it's been up for a while.
Yep.
So I went through this, and I think the important thing to take away is that we're not on the cemetery. We're almost 29 feet from the cemetery line. That's just a basic thing. Just in case somebody was saying we're affecting the cemetery, but we're away from it, on your land, on public land, so, and we appreciate that. We meet the criteria that has to be either educational, for the flippy sign, educational, cultural, agriculture, not exclusively any of those, but we're all of those, those three things. We are educational, we are agricultural, and we are cultural. So I'm just laying a foundation for us asking for permission to announce particular events. And we were wrong in leaving it up most of the winter. That was wrong. We shouldn't have done that.
Well, only for maintenance of your sign.
Right. The flippy sign.
Well, the flippy sign, you always...
No, no, but it allows, under the bylaws, to have that flippy sign for announcing particular events, educational, agricultural, and in our case also...
Where is that?
Oh, it's in, it's in here, Section 9.
Of the sign bylaw?
Yeah, yeah.
Sign bylaw or the, or the sign, the policy through the Board of Selectmen?
Right, one or the other, but it has to be firmly anchored, which I tie it always to...
But any, any sign on town property through the Board of Selectmen...
That's why we're here. I want to ask you for permission to modify or amend.
That's different than the sign bylaw. The sign bylaw is a general bylaw for businesses and things like that. But when you're on town, when you're on town-owned property, that's why it would come through here.
Okay.
The flippy sign or whatever, however you want to, I call it a sandwich board sign.
Yeah, yeah.
However you want to refer to it, that's not even mentioned in here. This is specifically talking about your wooden sign.
Right.
And it was very, it was thought out. There was a lot of conversation. I can see that looking through this, because your sign calls to be six feet high, four feet long, 18 inches in height.
Right.
And I would assume that the reason that that was done, like, talked about and designed that way was for line of sight when you're sitting in a car to go underneath.
Right.
Right? So, and I bring that up since we're here talking about signs. I noticed on this sign that's down here, there's isolates underneath, so you could hang a secondary sign.
The blueberry, it's two seasons, blueberry and apple.
That could be an issue based on the line of sight that the police, fire, town engineer, whoever at the time, was considering, and that's probably why they went six feet high.
So we are six feet high at the top, and we do attach that placard sign firmly, and this bylaw doesn't apply, because I'm here before the Selectmen, but it did say in the bylaw that it has to be firmly applied to whatever it is. And it's six square feet, that two-by-three sign. We really only want to have it up when we're announcing Shitake Mushroom Event, the National Livestock Day, concerts, things that we do with the town, you know, things that are educational, cultural. I mean, again, that's not part of what, I'm just bringing forward what we do, and we think we do all of those three things pretty well. And I think that's contributed to the growth and the stability of the USDA farm, which is what we are, USDA farm. And we're just asking permission to be able to have the support, continued support of the board, to have that flippy sign attached firmly for events with, down within 48 hours. I know that's the bylaw thing, but it makes a lot of sense. I'm usually going on the way home, taking it that night back, just get it out. So that's all. I'm here for permission to do what we do. That's all.
Yeah, well, actually, you're here to address the, the concern of one of your fellow residents that...
And I appreciate it. So here we are.
So if we're going to get into modifying the agreement that you had in place in 2019, I think it may be proper to actually advertise it as such. So then if anybody has concerns, they can come and address it.
Whatever the pleasure of the board is, I just think we're doing consistently...
I'm only one of five people for tonight, so I don't know how the other ones feel. You have any input on this, Tim?
As a neighbor, I see the growth in the facility, and it's truly remarkable to have, you know, that right in my backyard, so I certainly appreciate that. And I'm not casting judgment on the sign itself, I'll just tell the board, that particular corner, for generations, had been protected and, and signs, political, I think there's actually a sign on it right now.
For concerts, for the camp.
Right.
Yeah, I've seen that after we talked the other day, and I'm like, and that's what happens. It just, it just, so how do I say something to you and not say something, but I'm not the police.
So they, they pop up, the Highway Department, you know, historically has always taken down. It was a major concession for the Board at that time to grant the larger, more solid structure, right? And then we're migrating a little bit into something that, you know, we're talking about tonight. I just tell the Board, that's, that's kind of the lay of the land and how the town had protected that particular parcel. Now, is it contiguous to the cemetery? Is it part of the cemetery? We probably have plot lines that, you know, would really define that, but I do know we've protected that in the past. I wonder if there's another sign other than kind of something that we buy at Costco or something that might be more natural?
Just the words change every time.
Right, right.
Different events.
If you don't mind, Tim. I think originally, you, the thought, and I could be all wrong, this is just a perception, that the thought of putting these signs up was to get your notice, the, all right, they must be up this street, right? So it's like more of a directional sign to get to where you are.
And there's an arrow on there.
Right? So it's a directional sign to tell people how to get to where you are. Now you, unfortunately for you, your business is growing, but now it's growing to a point where now you not only need a directional sign, now you're looking to have advertisement-type signs for events and things like that. So it starts off with blueberries, then it's concerts and things like that. And I think that may be some of the concerns, that when people complain about it, that's what it is. So you say 29 feet from the cemetery, but there's only like five or six feet of grass on the side of that wall. So I don't think you're 29 feet from it.
We took it off at GIS, which could be wrong by a couple of...
I'm just looking at it, driving by.
I have the picture.
You know where my house is, you drive by it every day, so I go by this and this.
I have the aerial, and it shows the sign considerably away from the property line, if the property line is right on GIS.
I'm going by the stone wall, that's all.
Yeah, whatever.
Just deception, whatever it is. And I'm not here to argue with you, I'm just, we're here, we're here just talking this out, that's all we're doing, right? So we have to address it, and we can't just ignore it. So if you, if you're looking for a modification to your sign, I think the proper way to do it is just have some sort of notice go out that we're going to have a meeting on the sign.
That's fine. I was trying to avoid that, because we, you know, I don't want to make a public noise and have 400 people in here.
I was trying to avoid it the first time, that's why I talked to you in April, right? So I asked the town administration.
But the neighbor could have, whoever this person is, could have spoken with us too, and it would have, you know, it's, it's not people, it's, it may be person. And so we service probably 15,000 people a year through that place, and families, in fact, we have people make dates there. It's a safe site, and we would never think that anybody, you know, we're so well-received, and, you know, we have a conflict, maybe if there's a bad apple or an egg doesn't crack right or something, but other than that, but anyway, I'd like to hear from the rest of the Board here too, so.
Do you guys have any comments?
Well, I think we should stick to the, the topic at hand as far as the complaint, and if there's going to be a review on us, on sign or signage, that it should be addressed as, as needed. I don't think that's a topic for tonight.
Okay.
Anything on that, Max?
You know, I think he's right. We probably do need to set up our own separate meeting. We got to give other people a chance to have their own input in it, because now it's kind of shifted to a different topic than when we first came here to discuss. And then we can have a more deeper discussion once we have maybe an opposition voice, that person who put in their complaint can come and give their side of the story. I don't think we're getting the full picture at this very moment.
And not the prolonged agony, but that's just policy procedure.
Yeah, I mean, we just got to do business as is. We're in a high blueberry season right now, and, you know, it's like most orchards and USDA farm, you know, a certain amount of money and there a certain amount of years, you know, time, months, what we can, and, you know, you know, there are neighbors here, and these are just a microcosm of what we have for supporters, and, you know, thousands and thousands of supporters on Facebook, and, you know, we're just, like, we're just so blessed that we've, this is in six and a half, seven years, whatever, we're taking this downtrodden place, and we've made it what we think is fairly beautiful and active and educational, cultural, and all that stuff. So, and I know you're not...
Nobody, nobody's disputing any of that, Aaron.
Right. So we'd like to think...
Your efforts are noticed.
We put up signs that were hand-burned, designed signs, which need some maintenance, they're coming down. I think next Sunday, Nick is away for a few days, we're going to...
I think the biggest concern with, with came in was that sandwich board sign, so I don't think there's any issue at all. Nobody even called out the fact of what the original understanding was.
And we've been putting up that sandwich sign for about three years now, and here and there, and announcing National Livestock Day, you know, Santa Claus, or this, yes, it's advertisements, but we, but it's informative, and that's in the bylaw. It suggests that, and it's not the Selectmen...
It's on town property.
Right, it's your, I get it.
That's the difference.
I get it. I just, yeah.
So that's why I received the complaint and not the building inspector, so anyways.
So let's set up whatever you got to do, you know, whatever we have to do. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would just wonder, I mean, you know, this, I don't, might not be very contentious, or it could be very, you know, could be contentious. I wonder if, just tabling this until after your season, where we can methodically and thoughtfully look at this, might make the most sense for all kind of thing.
The only problem with that is what's he do with the sign from now until the end of the season? Are you suggesting to just ignore the fact that the sign's up there from now until the end of the season, or stop him from...
No, I'm suggesting that it's spent up on occasion for three years or so, and that this town could probably live within a few more months to allow you to really push through the final part of your season. That's all.
Yeah, because we're fine with coming before, you know, we can, it's a partnership. I mean, it isn't, the town's not separate from us, we're not separate from the town.
I would rather just address it to give, give you the same courtesy as anybody else, right? So if you, if you came with something and said your neighbor over there is having signs all over their yard, and you don't like it, do I just go through the summer, we'll talk about it in the fall? I don't think that's a, that's a fair way to handle it. I would rather, not to make a rock fight out of it, but I, just decide what you want to do, right? Send it in to Lisa, and we can put it on the next agenda and talk about it, doesn't matter.
Oh, go ahead, Patty.
Yeah, I mean, I think it is important, that sandwich sign, and that, you know, just a day or two before the event, and then we take it down right after, so it's normally only up like two days. And during the summer, it is up a lot more, and then during, you know, once, you know, the, you know, there's a Halloween event, and then Santa Claus, and then that's, that's it. But I think it does, it's, since we're kind of like not right on the main thoroughfare in, for like marketing reasons or whatever, I feel like it's important, so whatever we need to do.
Aaron sits on a board with controversial times, and it's not always easy to sit through the stuff, but you have a job to do, and you have to do it, so.
Oh, I had to stop that, yeah, and that's fine.
It is not, I don't think anybody here is totally against your sandwich board sign. I don't even get any indication anybody is, but I think we should still address it properly and go through the process.
Right, and that's fair enough. I mean, we have some friends and supporters here, but, you know, we'll come again, and, you know...
I don't want you to leave here feeling like you got attacked, if something came in and I was obligated to.
No, I mean, you guys are always, I mean, this is a tough job for you two, and I'm on planning board, and it's a tough job as well, but it's, it's...
Right, it should be, everybody should be equal, and if this is a process, then I think it's a very good idea.
But it's, you know, I think it's a little separate than someone leaving signs on that, and I wasn't going to get into this any slinging or anything, but, you know, I'll rototill for you, you know, one guy, and here we are, something with all thousands of people.
This is a conversation that's had many times.
Oh, yeah, and it will happen again, right?
Not in a position where you can run, I, I don't like to sign on Tim's yard, so I'm going to run over and take a sign down, or Matt, get that Tim, uh, sign off.
No, let's address it, we can get it done. We want an understanding.
It's a process you have to go through and respect the process.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're out of control.
Right, right.
So with that complaint, and I'll mention this as well, is you weren't the only one that was mentioned. They mentioned the sign that's on the town common. I personally don't think any sign should go on the town common, whether it's for donations or whatever it should be for. It's designated as a war memorial, it should be respected as such, right? And some people view that the cemetery, because there's veterans buried in the cemetery, they view it similar, so.
Right, and we have a ton of veterans that come to us a lot of the time, so...
And I don't want to drag this out any longer than I need to, but it's stuff that we need to talk about.
That's fine.
That's all. Does that sound like a good action plan? Just think about how you want to address your sign, send it in to Lisa, and we get on the next agenda.
Right, we're just going to address it as we've been using it, and just outline how we want to use that in that way. Then that'll be before you, and that's what we are talking about, an amendment and modification.
And anybody that's concerned about it, and seeing the agenda tonight, knows you came in there, and they watched the meeting, they know what the conversation was, and if they have any opposition to it, they're more than welcome to come join us.
Right.
All right. I'm just going to muddy the waters a little bit and say, in my mind, there's, you have the footprint of your sign, right, and you've got that space underneath it. I wonder if something could be manufactured with a sandwich board or something.
No, well, that's a problem, though, Tim, because that, that was specifically designed that way for line of sight when you're sitting in a vehicle.
I, you know, okay, I, we never, this, no...
I don't remember that.
Yeah, I don't remember it being particularly, you know, that we had to keep it a certain amount of inches off the ground that people are looking through, because we're pretty far back in that corner, and the sight lines are pretty good. And then we have one downtown, and that wouldn't hurt or hinder that at all, but that, anyway, let us put a narrative together and suggest what we're looking for.
Yeah, I would say, do that and look at this process, while maybe ugly, but it'll be collaborative.
Right.
We want you to succeed, for sure.
And, you know, we've worked six, seven years of hard, hard work, and we want to still continue to foster and partner and all those good words that are cliches, but they're actually real, so.
And continue growing.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Absolutely.
We'll get together. Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have the review of the new legal services representation for cable license negotiations. Is anybody here for that? Ah, Pat.
Hello. New members, I'm Pat Aldrich, Cable Coordinator, so I run the cable TV department here. Currently, we're in a renegotiation phase with Charter to get a new tenure license. Our current license expires in November of this year, so we have done a lot of work leading up to this, but we've decided to go a different route with a new lawyer. So what we have in front of you right now is the renewal, license renewal, legal services agreement from the new lawyer, who, you know, he has a pretty specific vision of how he wants to go about it, that I, after discussing with the cable subcommittee, who Kevin Morse and Fred Fontaine are on, you know, his direction is a little more, I think it aligns with what we want to do, which is kind of, you know, just come to an agreement with Charter, get something in place, you know, not a lot of bickering and fighting about it. We just want to see what, what they think is reasonable, what we think is reasonable, and try to hammer something out.
I see a letter in here from you, Matt, to the existing, or the current attorney. You're fine with this document?
Yes. Appointing of legal counsel is the responsibility of the Board. We just had to make a decision with existing counsel. Like Selectmen Bone, and I'm trying to choose my words carefully. I think there was some mission creep and some distraction on the part of prior representation that took us really way off the path of having an effective negotiation. And there's a strategy issue or a negotiation issue here, I don't want to get into in an open session, but Charter holds most of the power, bargaining power, in this conversation, is really their monopoly, and they're giving us a franchise fee, and they will only give us what they're willing to give us. So generally, the parameters for the negotiation are very narrow. What you don't want it to do is you don't want it to expire, because then we find ourselves in a tough spot. So in light of the fact that existing counsel was not getting us anywhere near an agreement, and here it is, the end of July, and the deadline is November, Chairman Morse and Mr. Fontaine and Pat really recommended strongly that we change direction, so it took some doing on Pat's part to find someone. That was, the cable attorneys are pretty few and far between, and telecommunications is kind of a pain in the backside to get expertise local to Massachusetts. So Pat was successful. I think the strategy being espoused by this attorney is much more standard, and it's a much more comfortable place to be than when we were.
How is our cable access account in general? I know people are streaming more, which means they're not paying the pegged fee.
Sure. You know, to date, do you mean, how is our, like...
How's cable operations? Are we feeling a pinch from streaming?
No, not quite, not, because this license was set up with a very specific dollar amount available to us, so it wasn't, it wasn't based on a percentage of their gross revenue, of the town's gross revenue. So that may be a, you know, a model that we look at for this renewal, which, which might have a little bit more effect on us that way, but I really think that we've shaved down anything that would be troublesome, and, you know, I've been kind of seeing a trend coming for a little while, and I've been preparing sort of models to base it on, you know, if that does become an issue, if the dwindling subscriber fee, you know, if people leave in large numbers. They haven't left in that large of numbers, so it, you know, I think that it seems like a lot of people are leaving and cutting the cable, but on our end, it doesn't, it doesn't appear that it's that much of a giant change. I mean, it certainly is going down, but it's not all at once by any means. So I think the answer is probably, we're doing, we're doing good right now.
Doing all right?
Yeah.
And then the other part, I know we talked offline, was, you know, maybe looking into monetizing our page and having people watch 15 seconds of a video before, how that would go flow directly to you, but I'm sure we could figure that out.
Yeah, and on YouTube at least, they have certain parameters, minimum parameters that you have to hit, so we'd need a certain subscriber base count, and then hours of watch time and stuff like that, which we are, we are nearing. And I've actually, since we talked, I put this on a list, so YouTube will actually alert us when we become, you know, monetize, when we can monetize the channel. Now, whether or not we do that, that'd be a decision we make, but when we meet those requirements, which we are climbing towards.
All right.
So maybe at some point, we'll be able to do that.
You guys have any? You looking for a motion to authorize entering into an agreement? Name, break, care to make that motion?
Make a motion that we enter into the agreement that's been presented to us tonight?
For the cable license renewal, legal services?
Sure.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next thing up is, thank you, Pat.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Next thing up is review the solar bylaw amendment for fall town meeting. Mr. Benoit, would you like to join us?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. For the record, Matthew Benoit, Director of Community Development.
You want to brief us quickly on the bylaw?
Yes, sir. Sure. So last year, last fall, we presented a solar bylaw to town meeting, which was passed. It sat in the possession of the Attorney General for quite some time, and it even had an extension past the original 90 days for review. Reason being, as we knew we were coming into town meeting, there was an active case law, Tracy Lane versus the City of Waltham, and that the ramifications from that case might affect our bylaw at that time. Now, that hadn't closed yet, so the Attorney General was waiting for that to happen, and it did. So then they approved our bylaw, but had several recommendations for us to consider at a future fall town meeting. So upon receiving that, at the end of May, we sent it off to Town Council for review and to try to incorporate the Attorney General's letter along with any changes that they may recommend to put up in front of the fall town meeting. And that is what we presented to the planning board at their last meeting. The changes are strictly recommendations from Town Council to correspond to the letter from the Attorney General. And speaking with council, they said this changes are too substantial to just make. You have to go back to town meeting and accept the amendments. So as of right now, the solar bylaw as printed, all 13 pages of it at last fall town meeting, is accepted. These are just the amendments shown that you'll see in the red lines in the letter before you this evening. So in accordance with MGL 48, Section 5, the selectmen would be kicking off with a motion for the planning board to schedule a public hearing.
In here, does it capture anything about the runoff?
Well, I don't believe it captured anything in, like, some of the issues that we're having.
Well, that's the rule I am bringing up. So is that something that we would do under a different stormwater bylaw?
Yes. I'm glad you mentioned that. It's actually something we started working on. Our MS4 compliance officer identified some earmarks for years in which we would work on general zoning and subdivision regulations. And those years were going to be 2024, 2026, and 2028. However, given the recent events, and some of the things that have been happening, we've decided to elevate that, and we're already working on reaching out to other communities to get templates for solar, excuse me, for stormwater bylaws. General bylaws, hopefully administered by conservation, might be able to get something off for fall town meeting, and it might be a little aggressive. But there are a lot of entities I want to be able to put eyes on it.
But if we can get proactive, we've had quite a few problems over the last couple of years.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure everybody's tired of dealing with.
Yes, sir.
On whichever level.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And a lot of sympathy for that, right? So that it's very unpleasant to be downhill from a major solar facility that's not managing its stormwater. There is this creature of Massachusetts law called the Dover Amendment that specifically carves out a privileged status for certain uses of property, places of worship, and others, education, and they added solar power.
How?
To the list of property uses that have Dover protections. So we would probably get into a fair amount of trouble if we passed a stormwater bylaw that applied only to solar panels.
Oh, yeah, no.
So we, a general bylaw or general approach is what we absolutely have to do.
Yeah. Yeah, I was looking, not just, that just happens to be one of the problem areas, but I was looking overall, because it's not just solar development. If they go in there and they strip a lot of the area and they don't put up any protection and not thinking about how the water's going to travel downhill.
The part about Dover is public safety and welfare, so we have to meet that threshold.
Yep.
Even with the general regulation. It has to. Now, I think people wouldn't argue that it.
I think we've met it a few times, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Just to that, to that point, some of the communities and through my peers that I've reached out to, were able to come up with a template from a community that had the fortunate privilege of having the D P stormwater coordinator at the time live in their community as a member of one of their boards, who actually wrote their regulation.
Yep.
So that's one of the templates we're going to be pulling hard from.
Yeah. I don't want to go too far off subject, because it's not on our agenda to talk about, but I know it's been a problem. And I was looking through this, and I didn't see anything in there. That's why I asked the question.
Yes, sir.
But I appreciate your update on that. So you're looking for a motion to accept the amendments?
Yeah, for, for fall town meeting, more consideration.
Anybody care to?
I'll make a motion to accept the amendments on the solar bylaw for fall town meeting, 2023.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good to go.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Take care.
Next thing on our agenda is the approve the appointment of Adam Furno as acting highway superintendent and possible votes.
Mr. Chairman, this is in accordance with the Town Administrator Act. The authority to appoint department heads in an acting role for a period not to exceed six months with the approval of the select board and to establish the rate of compensation for that employee. With John Furno moving from highway over to the fire chief role, for accountability and command and control and management purposes, we need to have a director there, the highway department. We will not backfill Adam's position. So his, what we've been calling working foreman, but we could probably in 2023 change that to working supervisor, but that role was always the number two role, and it was the go-between, between the overall direction from the highway superintendent and the day-to-day work of the staff. Pardon me. That position was moved to a management position as part of comp reform, and it will be left vacant, so that $90,000,000 that was there will not be spent on a person. Elevating Adam to this role is a lower rate of pay than John because of the time and the seat. So John would be a step 15. Adam's going to be a step one in the role. So there is a difference there. So that is what I'm asking for your approval for. And there is a retroactive component of this, because he has been serving in the role since May.
May 18.
What we did to protect Adam is that in the early part of that appointment of John, we didn't have a precise notion of how long that was going to last. And Adam was the person on call and at the time was hourly and had the ability to earn overtime, so we did not make it retro to that period, because it would have been a pay cut for services he had already provided under his existing employment as an hourly employee at the time. So we protected him by not putting that retroactive date all the way back. We do need this, especially for just our internal processes, so a department head has to sign invoices, payment, payroll, and everything else. So we need somebody in this role.
Quick question, and it's only because, just another town finance question that I need to understand. Retroactive to last fiscal year, right? So how's that work? Is there money left in that budget, or is those votes closed?
Well, there'll certainly be plenty of money in the highway department's compensation budget. That's not going to be an issue. When it comes to timing, I hate to comment without Gene's input. I believe we're going to run one last payroll to cover the closure of fiscal, that would be fiscal '23.
Yep.
And that he would be made whole as a result of that.
Yep. Now, I'm just curious, because I've seen the dates, and I'm like, I'm always trying to understand all these numbers. But do you have any comments on this?
No, I think it's a great progression for Adam, a good opportunity, and serves the town very well. Be glad to support it.
With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Adam Furno as acting highway superintendent.
Make a motion that we approve Adam Furno as the acting highway superintendent?
Motion's been made.
I'll second that.
And I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one's all set. Next thing up is the approve the temporary rate of compensation for Adam Furno as a call captain on the fire department.
So this is cleanup of cleanup. You know, our bad internally. So at your last meeting, you approved temporary rates of pay for call firefighters, notwithstanding language that had appeared inadvertently on the town meeting warrant, and we did not include Adam's name on the list of people who would be affected. Adam is a call captain. He needs to be at step five for his hourly compensation to reflect what he earns now, what he was earning before comp reform when he attended fires, so. I'm asking for that. Same treatment for Adam as was for the other six or seven quality.
It's been a complicated process, so I'm sure it's a easy oversight. Anybody have any questions on that?
Nope.
I would entertain a motion to approve the temporary rate of compensation for Adam Furno as a call captain.
I will motion to approve temporary rate of compensation for Adam Furno as a call captain.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting minutes. Is Rich calling in or? Okay, so just for some clarification, we're going to, we'll go through our meeting minutes, approve or not approve, or whatever we're going to do. As far as the executive minutes, that Rich Bone is going to be calling in and giving us some explanation as to how we release certain minutes. You want to see if you can reach him? In the meantime, everybody can poke through their minutes.
Charting new territory here. We need legal counsel to approve minutes.
Well, it's not, it's not using them to approve them to make sure we're doing the proper thing, because when you start getting into...
Well, there's really actually two completely different topics. This agenda item is the approval of the minutes, the release of minutes. You've used legal counsel for many years.
No, I understand.
Right, and that's what I explained.
Those are completely different votes.
Yeah. Yeah, what I had said is, when we get into the executive minutes, we're going to get some clarification from Town Council as to which ones we can.
Well, also an update, because it's been delegated to him at the request of the select board. I'm not going to take ownership of how he manages his work. He is your appointee. You can have that conversation with him about how fast he's getting back the work product that you've asked for. But we have done our duty and given it to him in timely fashion.
Yep.
And we made it very clear that the Board wanted this done expeditiously. You need my phone? There are no cell phone issues at Town Hall in Douglas at all. None. Nothing to see here, move along.
I got five. Right back. I do, but let's see if it spits up. Of course, I'm a 401 number, you may. Rich?
Chip.
How are you, sir?
I'm good, brother. How are you?
I'm good. You are live on public access TV for the millions watching.
The tens and tens of people.
It was, it was my phone that seemed to work best, so that's what we're doing. I don't know.
You do speaker?
Yeah, it is.
Oh, it is? Don't we have somebody on that board who works for some big telecommunications agency?
Yeah, but he didn't show up. Yes, that's right. I said that.
How may I be of assistance?
Okay, so we have just some clarification on the executive minutes as to, we have a bunch of them that we're trying to clean up and get released, if we can release them. My concern as an individual was anything that pertains to any personnel matters or health issues, whether or not those become part of their personnel files and we don't release them, I don't know. So I'm looking for you for some guidance.
Yeah, Mike, I think you probably know, well, it's not that you already know what I'm going to say. Well, you're right. Let me just back up. With executive session minutes, we're allowed to go into executive sessions for certain purposes specified by the law. And we are allowed to withhold that's from public rights as long as the reason for the executive session continues to exist. So for example, in one set of executive session minutes that I took a look at today, there was a piece of, it was opioid litigation, that's still ongoing. So obviously, while you could, and in fact, you did, accept those minutes, you would not want to release that part of the minutes that relates to the matter that's still ongoing, and that was the subject of the executive session. So in a case like that, you know, where you, if you had, say, multiple executive session items under discussion, and that was the case in some of these things, what you do is if somebody is requesting a copy of the minutes, you go through, you figure out which of the items is ongoing and which is concluded. Concluded stuff that can be released. Ongoing stuff, like I mentioned, the opioid litigation, you would redact that part of the minutes. You know, suppose you had two things on an executive session, set of minutes, one that was finished and then the other one that was still ongoing. And somebody asks for a copy of the minutes, what you'd do is you would redact the one that was ongoing, you know, basically taking a black magic marker and just blacking that part out so it wasn't legible. And then you'd release the other part of it, which it was over and done with. Now, Pat, you had a very specific question, and I'm sorry I had to go through a sort of broad brush treatment there. If you have an executive session that relates to personnel matters, health matters, things of that nature, you have to review those sorts of minutes very closely before deciding that they can be released. If it's a health matter, basically, that's something that is almost never going to be able to be released, because it contains sensitive personnel information. It could implicate someone's HIPAA rights. So you have to tread very carefully, whatever you're dealing with, something that pertains to a health matter. If it's a disciplinary matter, it most likely would depend on the nature of the discipline involved, and that's kind of a case-by-case determination. But, you know, generally, I think your question was more health-oriented.
Well, it was both. The health is pretty clear in my mind. I don't know how the other ones feel. I'm more concerned with the, any personnel matters, whether it's a disciplinary thing that obviously is something more, that's more aggressive than something minor.
Yeah, I mean, health, you can't touch it.
No.
Discipline, that's going to be a case-by-case determination, you know, where you have to look at the specific minutes that are at issue to figure out whether, what the rights of everyone involved are. No. When you're dealing with disciplinary issues, what you're dealing with are two competing sets of interests. You're dealing with, you know, the interests of the public and its desire to know what's going on, but you're also dealing with certain privacy rights of the employee who's involved. So there is no broad brush answer. Specific minutes dealing with disciplinary matters have to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis before they can be released.
Rich, could I ask, who reviews or who makes that case-by-case determination? Is that the Board, or is that what you would do?
Well, probably what you would do is, you know, if you had a specific set of minutes that, you know, you were interested in, it's probably worth your while to point that one out to me, possibly Brian Mazer, if he was involved in it, and ask either one of us, you know, hey, Rich or Brian, what do you think? What do you think are the rights involved here? What do you think are the rights involved here? Are there gonna be any issues? And, you know, once we've had a chance to, once we know that this is something that you're looking at and have a chance to examine the minutes and maybe figure out whether there's anything hanging out there, you know, what the status is, you know, then we can make a recommendation to you. And then it's up to you to, to make the decision.
Which is what I was gonna suggest. The, my, my concern is, is to make sure that we don't jeopardize the town in any way. So if we rely on you or Brian to give us good guidance, and I would still recommend that we stay on that path.
Yeah, Mike, I think you're right. That's what we're here for. It's sensitive stuff. Like I said, you know, you've got two groups of competing interests. Both are very important. You know, we're here to help you navigate that.
Rich, so we reviewed these minutes. We got them earlier today. What if we need to amend? Do we wanna amend these minutes? Do we talk about that in open session? How do we, how do we make corrections to the documents that are presented to us?
These documents specifically about the executive minutes, Rich?
Yes.
Yeah, if it's, if it's something that is still an ongoing matter, or you suspect that there may be some kind of privacy rights involved, something of that nature, you would probably want to review the minutes in executive session, make whatever changes you think are appropriate. And then, you know, after having made such changes, you know, if you wanna review with council, that's certainly something that would be advisable.
I agree with that approach. If it's executive minutes and we wanna make any amendments at all to it, I think we should do that in executive time, because they're not released as, and so it wouldn't be proper to be discussing it in an open session. Otherwise, there would be no purpose for executive. Anybody else have any more questions for Rich?
No, it makes sense.
Tim?
No, I think that's fine. That makes good sense.
I appreciate your time, Rich.
No, my pleasure. I'm here when you need me.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
So if everybody's in agreement, I think the best approach to this is, is we go through the minutes and if anybody has any concerns about any of the executive minutes, then we, as a group, we follow them over to town council, let them review them, so it respects everybody's concerns, instead of taking about three to one or three to two or whatever it is to whether to send them or not. So we're only talking about a couple, a couple different meeting minutes, so it's not like we're gonna bombard the guy with a ton of meeting minutes. Anyways, let's get back to the reviewing these minutes here in the sake of keeping things moving. We have the July 5th, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Everybody had a chance to look at that? No, we didn't even need more time to look at them.
I'll make a motion to accept the July 5th, 2023 meetings as, as presented.
I'll second.
You got on them, Tim?
Yeah, if I...
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second set is July 18th, regular meeting minutes. July 18th.
Make a motion that we approve the July 8 minutes?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have two different executive session minutes. We'll do them separately. May 16th is the first one.
That's pretty straightforward. I'd make a motion that we approve the executive session, meeting minutes for May 16th, retaining all.
Yeah, the motion. Have a second.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Second set is May 31st, 2023.
Make a motion that we table the May 31 executive session minutes for further discussion in executive session. Because I have changes I'd like to make.
But not only that, is the, do we wanna consider the fact that Kevin's not here for these particular ones? But anyways, we have a motion to table for discussion in an executive session. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as none. All in favor?
Aye.
I will point out, there's no reference to any sort of health concerns in those minutes, so I hope that we release those when council says we can.
Okay, so at number seven, we have the flag policy, first reading for the Town of Douglas. I assume that Mr. Administrator, you put this together for us? I appreciate your effort.
I didn't actually. I won't play dryce. Attorney Bowen sent us a policy which he thought was acceptable under the laws of the country with respect to display of flags, and he used the Town of Dedham's policy. So I changed the word Dedham to Douglas, having no further direction from the board, and made a couple of other minor grammatical changes, just because there were errors in the original. I would call a board's attention to section B for your policy discussion. So it is just from my reading of this, this begins to open the door that you were trying to close. So what we wanted was to follow the law and guidance of legal counsel, which was, we had to have the most neutral policy possible, so only those flags that represent governmental units, the United States flag, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Town of Douglas. And I would personally call out that a POW/MIA flag is standard in most government facilities. It represents our sentiment about those that we may not have recovered yet and are still looking for. But here, when we get into section B, we, I just think it starts to open the door back up to the very things that have caused a lot of the controversy to begin with in other communities. I do realize that on subsection three, the former town manager in Dedham is probably the world's biggest Patriots flag, and when they won the Super Bowl, he wanted to put a Pats fan in front of, flag in front of his town hall. But frankly, I'm not a big believer in, in that, because it's a for-profit professional sports organization, and while we may be supporters of a team, it doesn't necessarily belong on a municipal government building or flagpole. I think number two opens the door for virtually any consensus of a select board sitting at the time as to what they consider to be a ceremonial function, to squeeze something in here that may violate the rest of the policy. You don't have to try too hard. I'll try, I'll use a non-controversial example. The color purple has become very symbolic in our society for resistance to experimentation with drugs and fighting addiction. In some circles, it's, you know, a form of acknowledgement of certain forms of cancer that people struggle with, but the color purple is important. Why would you choose to only fly purple? Because you decided it was important? Because at that point, now you are opening the door to the exact same discussion that we've already had, which is, it can't just be what you think is important, it's everybody in that same space. So when you get to breast cancer awareness, you would fly a pink flag, and it just gets into this whole situation. Those are non-controversial items, which you can imagine where this could go, depending on where people stand. The toughest one is number one. I don't know that we're gonna run out and participate in the sister community program anytime soon. I think there's ways to acknowledge a sister community in a foreign country if their delegation comes to your town hall. I don't necessarily think you have to have a flag of their country flying on the flagpole outside, that you can put a poster up and that does the trick.
You mean, we can't get Mike to go to Ireland and represent Douglas?
[laughing] We'll have to fight over it, Mike. My grandmother's village in Poland is the same side as Douglas. It would be a perfect match, actually.
I can bring you back a pint.
But I gotta, I gotta tell you, you know, this is, the point I was making in the last meeting is, if we wanna celebrate a certain ethnic heritage, you don't realize, if you're not reading The Economist magazine every week, that they may be at a terribly bloody war with their neighbor, and you're, it's almost like you're picking a side in something that, from foreign policy experts and not...
I totally agree with you. Once, once you venture outside of, number one, under the standards on the first page, you're opening yourself back up. I don't, I don't think the ceremonial flag section should even be included in this myself.
Being on town property, town buildings, I think it should just be strictly American flag, American-related town, state, and no other, strictly...
Yeah, that's what he has in the, if you look under. This is what I was referring to, that section there.
Okay. Exact.
Flags are like signs, so...
So this is the first of three meetings. If you wanted to simply strike that, it would be best to do so in the form of a motion so that the next reading, we would have that out of there.
Be eliminated, yeah.
I support what we're thinking there. I'm just wondering if we keep section B and we just make it abundantly clear that the town does not participate in ceremonial flag celebrations, display, and then strike the rest of it? Make it crystal clear?
Well, if, yeah, the, my thought on it anyways, Tim, was if section B was taken out completely, it's pretty clear in section one.
No, you're right.
As to what to do is, once, once we keep a section in there, it, it creates the possibility of expansion at some point, but I think...
Take it out?
Does everybody agree to eliminate ceremonial flags in section B out of there in, in its entirety?
I agree with removing section B.
You need any kind of vote on that, Matt, or you'll just eliminate it for the next reading?
It's your policy, so if you would vote it, it would be nice and clean, please.
I would look for a motion to eliminate section B ceremonial flags in its entirety.
Some move.
Motion's been made and seconded?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing as none. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion on the traffic control recommendations for intersection of North Street and Gilboa Street. Possible votes.
So Mr. Chairman, this is a CMRPC-funded study of this intersection, and just to go back over the history, we had asked CMRPC about two years ago to do a study at this intersection to determine if the Town of Douglas and this intersection qualified for a, what is called a warrant for a signalized intersection, whether the safety concerns, quote unquote, warranted that much, that level of, of traffic control. And as you may recall, the town did not meet the standard for a warrant, so there is no impetus here to have any kind of light at this intersection. However, there are still concerns about the safety of the exchange, and we wanted to establish a baseline before any of these warehouses are open and operational of what the dialogue is gonna be about what goes on at this intersection, what the flags for trouble might be that would cause us to do deeper safety enhancements. From page seven on to about page 14 of this report, there are a number of very specific recommendations by the traffic engineer on what we might do to improve the safety of the intersection in its current state. I don't believe this study calls for it to be made a four-way intersection. I think there's some discussion of that. There's definitely a safety improvement by making it a four-way intersection, but there's a significant traffic impact that is quite negative, because Gilboa Street up to that intersection during rush hour carries a tremendous amount of traffic. So on the way out of Douglas, you can imagine Manchog and North Street, both sides of North Street feed a great deal of outbound traffic onto Gilboa that then funnels all the way straight to 146. It is also the dispersment point on the way back home. So then, you know, people are branching off in three directions, but now they have the right of way to, to bear left, to not have a stop at all. If we stopped traffic at that with a new stop sign, the traffic may queue all the way back to the highway. That's just how much volume comes through there, and the specific hours of most days, but specifically five days of the week. So that is actually a bigger problem.
Well, it'll also affect the queuing going across the bridge and up North Street.
Exactly. So that's, that's a concern, so the recommendation is to make line striping enhancements, to call attention to stop signs ahead for all the three approaches where there is a stop sign, and to shave a little bit off that, that corner, because right now the temptation is to almost look at that as a yield when you're going right from North Street onto Gilboa. And there's, we own, the town owns that, that corner of the intersection through tax title, so there's, we have room to play with. The recommendation is actually to tighten that up, tighten it up. So as the roadway commissioners, you know, this is put out here for your attention. You don't have to take any action tonight. If you agree with any of the recommendations, it could be put on a future agenda and it could be, we would, we would give notice to property owners in the area, a general notice. We wouldn't do certified, but we might attract attention to what's going on to get comments from the pop, from the public. But most of these are, are not expensive fixes at all. So if the select board were to vote to do this, we would be able to do whatever recommendations you chose.
Can we put a rotary there tonight?
So...
A roundabout?
I mirror every other Tuesday that is a gentleman.
Yeah, Oxbridge's got two. We don't even have any.
Oh, goodness. You sound funny.
Gotta have some fun, Tim.
Yes.
There's, that's not a, a topic that's gonna die anytime soon, because if the volume were to continue to increase, we might not meet the warrant, but we might need more traffic control for that intersection. There's some discussion with the design team that if you put a rotary there, it would be part of a project to realign the North Street Bridge and to change its angle and to make it wider, and then to make some sort of fantabulous decoration in the middle of this intersection that made it impossible for trucks. this intersection that made it impossible for trucks. I haven't seen a truck driver yet in, coming through Douglas, who doesn't think he can make it. So...
I watched, I watched one come take a right on the North Street yesterday, and he...
Oh, boy.
Yeah, but the same guy may have taken out that traffic roadwork sign that was up that Richard...
Well, yeah, he ran across the lawn and took out the asphalt berm, but...
Actually drove over the sign, you know, the flashing sign plates ahead.
The sign still works, it's just the trailer's no good.
The trailer's crushed. But, long story short, CRG's Development Agreement for their warehouse specifically sets aside a quarter of a million dollars if there is a certain percentage increase in the volume through this intersection. So we will, frankly, not pun intended, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. As of right now, though, these are things we could go out there and do next week, and they would be, be acceptable.
I would suggest that we all keep this particular study, look through it, fully understand it, I guess. But you mentioned line, line painting, and I'm not saying that for this particular thing. I just want to make mention, I don't know if anybody's noticed that line painting that was done up on Northwest Main Street, but it actually pretty effective.
We moved that way up at Northwest...
Because of Pass Allen, though.
Yep.
To admit, I thought it was silly at first, but it actually works.
Especially if you've never driven that road before.
Okay, so the next thing is the town administrator's report.
I'm going to stick to good news, if that's all right with everybody?
Sure, I'm fine with that.
First of all, I don't actually have a whole lot of bad news, just good news. We got notice today that the senior bus is done. And we'll deliver it to the town in the very near future. It kicks us back on our heels a little bit because we budgeted six months for, for a driver and fuel and everything for the bus, and it came much faster than they had predicted that we would get. There's a way around everything, and between grant funds and other things that the, that the Adult Social Center, we should be able to swing this. But it's good news. We didn't want to wait till the fall, really, or the winter to do this, so there you have it. That money was approved and spent through a national, a national contract, and the bus has arrived. June 30th...
They had a schedule.
Yeah.
What color is it?
My thing is white. It would have to be, it has to be lettered, it has to be registered, all of the fun stuff that we have to do with MIA to pull it into our policy.
Sign the title to find out you can't sign it.
On June 30th, we, we closed books on this last year's worth of experience in our self-insured health insurance group. And I'm pleased to report that our loss ratio was tiny, and as a result, the working rate that the town paid in to the group significantly exceeded the amount that we have paid out in claims. A word of caution is that there may still be some trailing claims. So if I give you a number, it's not going to be the final number. There may be some claims from June that'll come in late that we'll have to satisfy. But right now, it looks at our one-year surplus. Doing the math real quick, $938,378. That's one year.
Yeah.
The group as a whole absolutely crushed it this year. It's unbelievable. So we added just about $10 million to our overall trust fund surplus amongst all the different groups. Some of the numbers are skewed because we did what's called a Medicare migration. So those members of the group that had people over the age of 65 who were still on active plans, those people were moved from their active plans over to a Medicare Advantage plan. So there's a huge savings involved in doing that. So the Town of Franklin and North Bridge, they, between a million and a million and a half each, I think Midway did almost a million dollars out of it. So that, Douglas did not need to do that because Mr. Gazinski in the past had already accomplished that with, with our group. So, but scrubbing it clean, you know, we're looking at now a surplus that's well in excess of $2 million in this trust fund. And the mechanics of removing those surplus and having them come back to the Town of Douglas for its purposes are also significantly improved. With such a large surplus in the trust fund, we no longer need to float claims that may have been posted to stop loss or other expenses. We're no longer providing liquidity to the fund, so we should be able to get most of our surplus out, which means that we'll be drafting a policy for the select board to consider, what do we do when those funds come back to the town? Gene will close them first and foremost to free cash, but where it goes from there is a matter of policy for the select board to decide. And there are some options that I'd like you to explore with the people you talk to and just in your own mind. You know, one is, the town's OPEB trust fund is critically underfunded, and in order to improve our bond rating, we need to put money towards that. So OPEB is the cost of health benefits that we have promised to our retirees. We have not set aside the money to pay for those benefits. Right now, we're paying as we go, but the accounting community has decided that they really want us to accrue that and, and fund it as quickly as possible. So that would be one possible use. There is a certain portion of this surplus which is entirely attributable to our employees and the 20% that they pay in out of their paychecks. So that math could drive a solution or a dispersment in the form of an HSA holiday. So to the extent we only pay 50% of the health savings account for employees, we might fund 100% in one year. With lots of cautionary language, this may not be forever, don't count on it, but you paid into it, so we're giving it back to you. Obviously, we'll have employees that are brand new that didn't actually, that will benefit from the program, that didn't pay in, but it's a little bit sloppy, but in general, we have a very stable employment base, and this would be a nice, you know, an appropriate gesture. Gene and I don't favor premium holidays. I'll explain that in a second. But a premium holiday would be simply to knock off the rate of increase in the premium. Now, this year was a zero, last year was a zero. So what Gene and I don't like about this is it creates a false set of expectations on the part of the employee that we would be able to maintain those rates after a one-year holiday. It's very hard to explain things that, it's amazing to me how short people's memories are, including my peers on this group. So we don't like to, to create that false narrative, which is that this is always going to happen and it's going to come out of the rate. Another potential use, and I would say, if I had to recommend one, this is one that I would, I feel strongly about. The town, over the course of several years, made many practical decisions about trying to give people an incentive to leave the benefit program because it would save the town a lot of money. So people who already were enrolled in the plan were given an incentive for leaving the plan, and that's several thousand dollars, and it's $3,000. People who never take the town's insurance get 200. So if you were all about the money and you just wanted to gain the system, you would take the town's insurance for your first year of employment and then quit because you would get $2,800 more just by that simple thing. So that, that to me is a, is a, is not fair. But it's very expensive to fix this, because obviously, you're not going to knock the people down [laughing] who are getting the incentive for leaving. You're going to have to build everybody up. So if that's $2,800 per person who has opted out of the town's insurance...
Then it's a one-time.
It's not a one-time, it's an annual...
Oh, it's an annual thing.
Yeah. So, once it's built into the budget, it would have to be funded every year. That's about, that's a six-digit task to do that. So those are some thoughts on about how you might want to go about it. The good news is, we're not talking about crazy rate increases or deficits. We're talking about a good problem to have, which is how do we disperse this?
Would you keep any in reserve in case you needed it to fund back into that healthcare thing?
I think that's another option. If I lose sleep over anything in this program, it's that we have so many people who have opted out that, so let's say, just assume for a second, I'm around, using round numbers to make the math easy, but a family plan, let's say it's about $25,000 a year. If six people who are not on the town's plan come in and join us and need a family plan, they just upped our health insurance budget by $150,000, which in Douglas is a lot of money, especially after the budget's already been approved. Try to find other sources of funding within a constrained budget to fill that. So if we had a stabilization account that covered the reasonable cost of what we could anticipate we could, we might get in a year, and it was capped, that might be a really wise way to use these funds to protect the town. Obviously, we want those in interest-bearing instruments under the investment policy so that the money wasn't just sitting there and not working for, for the town at all. Are there any other questions about health insurance? I want to move on to...
No, I don't have anything.
So, you see, work is beginning on Northeast Maine, and that is the final part of the run of the EDA project, which is to bring water up Northeast Maine to make the loop for the new cubes at Gilboa Building. And this contractor's been fun to manage, not. They have their own schedule, they have their own ideas. Generally speaking, we will still hold the schedule. It's just, instead of doing a lot of this work in the summer, it's going to, a lot of it's going to be done in the fall. We're still trying to hit a November deadline for the cubes at Gilboa to be open. Last but not least, we've gotten some attention in the Town of Douglas across the state for highly unusual occurrence, which was the extension of natural gas franchise from neighboring communities into Douglas. There was no authority for any natural gas company to operate in the town. That has to be approved by the Division of Public Utilities, and there never was a franchise for Douglas. The town was too small, and there was no need for it, there was no demand. When this economic development possibility raised its head, and the developers specifically said that they wanted gas or they wouldn't come here, it started the wheels in motion to get an application into the Division of, or Department of Public Utilities, really for the first time in some 45 years. So nobody currently working in the Attorney General's office or in the DPU had ever seen one of these before, so they had to dig out their law books and go through the hearing process. I just want to correct the record on a couple of things. They're not minor, they're actually quite important. The entire process is about as transparent as you could possibly get. There's public hearings, the testimony is open, any group that's interested can submit comments to the docket, and the hearing officer makes a decision as to whether or not, in this case, she was going to consider those comments. She ruled out of order and did not consider comments that were of a general policy nature because utilities regulation is based entirely on the specific facts of the case immediately in front of the hearing officer, which was whether or not gas service would go 1,000 feet into Douglas. It wasn't climate change or any other global policy consideration. One of the newspaper articles that has appeared, and I'm wrapping up quickly, the, I quote, "was taken out of context with respect to the timing of the application." First of all, the application is not filed by the Town of Douglas. We don't manage the document, we don't own the document, we can testify to it, we may have asked for it, but it is not our document. It was Eversource's document, and an Eversource official was quoted as saying, "We will file the full application 60 days after construction begins." And it makes it sound kind of, well, kind of underhanded, right? It's, looks like you're trying to make it a fait accompli. Absolutely not the case. This project is three towns, not just Douglas. Douglas, Sutton, and Uxbridge. Sutton already has a gas franchise. Gas can go anywhere Eversource wants it to in Sutton. Same in Uxbridge. Eversource can run gas anywhere they want to in the Town of Uxbridge. The project began at the corner of Oakhurst and Lackey Dam Road in, ugh, test my local geography. I believe that is still Sutton.
That is Sutton.
So when that construction began and ran into the Town of Uxbridge, there was nothing to stop it. And the warehouse that it was serving wasn't our Douglas warehouse, it was the other warehouse on the other side of 146.
That we have 9% of.
We only have 9% of it. Now, while the gas connection does come in through that tiny corner of Douglas, it's irrelevant. The service connection is made at the street, and the street is in Uxbridge. Everything else is private property. So there was no concern there with public utility regulation. And then Eversource stopped and did not run any further gas lines anywhere near the Town of Douglas until after the franchise was approved. So for anybody who says that we tried to sneak this, it really, the work was done because the work could be done to pick up one facility, but ultimately, the goal was to pick up several facilities in Douglas and come all the way to Main Street, which only happened after the franchise was approved. There's one more article yet to come out. Worcester Telegram Gazette has done an interview with me that went over an hour. I think it's going to be very similar to the Boston Globe story. I had the chance to clarify some of these points. Obviously, the Gazette reporter was interested in poking the nose of their rivals at the Globe. I don't know exactly how it's going to come out, though. But I expect it to appear sometime this week. That's my report for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, any open session topics not readily anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting? Seen as none, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session for interest in real property, for highway facility options, interest in the Chapter 90 parcels of Orange Street and Southeast Main Street, contract negotiations for the fire chief, contract negotiations for the town administrator. Anybody can make a motion for that?
I will make a motion that we move into executive session for the purposes of discussing highway facility options, the Chapter 61 parcels of Orange Street and Southeast Main Street, contract negotiations for Fire Chief John Ferno, and contract negotiations for the town administrator, Matt Wajek, and to leave executive session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
Would you, would you amend your motion to include the discussion of minutes?
Can we do that now?
Yeah, you could amend your own motion if you want to, but I want to keep it...
You wanted to amend your minutes in executive session?
Yeah, I want to, well, I'm not prepared to change them yet, I just know they're wrong.
Okay, so we'll do it on the next...
Yeah.
All right, so motion's been made, second, any further discussions? Seen as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Postman, aye.
Smith, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone, an aye.